Yeah. Hello, hello. Hello. Testing, testing. Is it on? Okay. Okay. I will recall to order the January 13th, 2011 City of Wood Dale Planning, Zoning and Building Committee Meeting. Will the minute taker please call roll?
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Caddella.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
We have a forum present. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting dated December 9th, 2010. Is there a second?
Hello?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. The next item is a report and recommendation, adoption of the 2009 International Code Council Group as the City of Wood Dale Building Code. John Forrest, would you please give us a brief rundown and any sticking points that there may be?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Currently, the City of Wood Dale has adopted the 2003 International Code Council Group that was adopted in 2005 as our building code. I think you remember last summer when staff brought this forward initially, we displayed for you what the International Code Council Group looks like. It is not the City of Wood Dale Building Code Amendments that most people think is the building code. As you recall, it was a stack of books about this high, which pretty much covers any situation that you would run across in the building of any kind of structure. So, the City of Wood Dale, we were mandated by the State of Illinois to adopt the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code. So, we've already started our adoption of the 2009 code group. And it should be noted that the appendixes included with the building codes are not automatically adopted. We have to adopt those individually. That allows us to kind of customize the code for our needs here in Wood Dale. So, the first code that I would recommend we adopt would be the International Building Code, which is the parent code of the group. It governs the construction of commercial multifamily condominiums, industrial, high-hazard occupancy, and other types of public buildings. It's kind of the umbrella code that references more specific codes and standards among the group. And in adopting the International Building Code, I would recommend that we adopt appendixes B and G. There are a couple of things in this code that we would like to delete, excuse me, or revise. Initially, one would be to revise the section of the International Building Code that references adopting the International Plumbing Code as Wood Dale's plumbing code. We need to add in there as well the Illinois State Plumbing Code as amended. That way, we'll be able to go back and forth between the two codes, and that should cover any sort of plumbing installations that we might run across through the years. Also, we would like to add one section to the code, which would be Section 101.4.7, as the International Building Code does not specifically adopt or make reference to adopting an electrical code. And what we'd want to insert in that section would be that Wood Dale would adopt the National Electric Code, the 2008 edition, also known as NFPA 70. And initially, there is one other section that we would like to delete, Section 105.2, and that is the section of the code that allows work exempt from permits. Staff feels that there are too many situations listed in the code that would not require a permit that we feel people should come in and get permits for. So, we can also make these adjustments in our local building code amendments, which I will talk about a little bit later. The second code of this group is the International Residential Code. That governs the construction of single-family, two-family, or duplexes, and townhome residential structures, including private garages. Also included are requirements for swimming pools and accessory buildings. A major change to the 2009 addition of the code is the requirement for the installation of fire sprinklers in all residential buildings, including single-family homes. And that section of the code was effective January 1st, 2011. Now, it's important that you note, this is a 2009 version of the code, but when the Code Council put this out for municipalities to adopt, they gave a two-year window before they had to start enforcing the sprinkler provision for the residential occupancies. It's probably no secret that builders in general are not thrilled with this section of the code, particularly right now, the way the economy is. They see it as just another burden and another expense that they have to include when they're building a single-family home. I have done some research, though, and I kind of tossed this one back and forth the last several months, because I realized that this could put a burden on the builders. But I was at a seminar a few months ago, and the thing that really turned me around was, in the early 1970s, the NFPA did a test on a single-family home that they constructed out of all the materials that were in use at that time. And what they wanted to find out was if a fire started in that house, how long would it take for that to develop enough smoke where it would kill the occupants, and also at what point would the fire reach flashover? And it was all kind of determined, they wanted to see how much time somebody would have to get out of the house. Well, in the early 70s, they found that people had about 17 minutes from the time a fire started until it reached that point of flashover and developed enough smoke where you would start killing the occupants. A couple of years ago, they did the same test. They built a single-family residence using the materials that are in common use today. And, you know, it's, there's a lot more plastics and man-made materials in use. And what they found was, the time that it took this fire to reach flashover and create enough poisonous smoke to kill the occupants was a little over three minutes. So, that's when the Code Council decided they would put the sprinkler requirement in the residential code. Residential sprinkler systems are designed differently than an industrial or a commercial sprinkler system like we have in this building here, for example. These kind of systems are designed to put a fire out. A residential sprinkler system is designed to just slow down the progress of a fire enough to allow the occupants to get out. You know, again, smoke detectors have been required in single-family residents for several years, so you would anticipate everybody would have smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors. The sprinkler system just adds another level of protection in a single-family home for the residents. You are able to run a residential sprinkler system off of the domestic water supply. So, you would not necessarily have to run a separate water supply in. Again, I've done some research, and I've found that typically, a builder can expect to pay between $1.60 and $1.90 per square foot when he's constructing a new home to add the sprinkler system into it. So, if you've got a 2,000-square-foot house, you're looking at about $4,000. 3,000-square-foot house, about $6,000. Doesn't seem like a lot of money for the protection that, you know, it's going to offer. Now, the thing is with this sprinkler requirement, as I mentioned earlier, when the ICC brought forward the 2009 code, they did allow two years for municipalities to comply with that. So, I think one thing that you may want to discuss and think about would be the fact that once we would adopt this 2009 code, we could make the sprinklers requirement effective immediately. Or we could give some of the builders, you know, six months or even up to a year before we actually start enforcing it. Does kind of seem with the economy and the condition that it's in right now, you know, we are adding another $5,000 or $6,000 onto the cost of a house. But again, that's something for you to discuss and decide what you would want to do. But remember, the Code Council did give municipalities two years before they had to start complying with that section of the code. With the residential code, we would recommend adopting the appendixes A, B, C, D, E, G, H, J, K, M, O, and Q. Some of the other appendices are either not relevant to Wood Dale or adequately addressed elsewhere in the code group. The next code that we would recommend adopting is the International Fire Code, which governs fire safety requirements for all different types of structures other than single-family homes and duplexes. It addresses fire suppression systems, fire alarms, hazardous materials, and is intended to adequately protect public health, safety, and welfare without unnecessarily increasing construction costs. Again, we would recommend including Appendix I. Next is the International Mechanical Code, which governs heating and ventilation systems for commercial, multifamily, industrial, and other types of public buildings. It addresses a variety of issues from overall air quality to hazardous exhaust. And no appendixes would be required to be adopted with that. Next is the International Fuel-Gas Code, which is designed to work in conjunction with the mechanical code. The fuel-gas code sets forth the design and installation of fuel-gas systems and appliances. The International Existing Building Code governs remodeling and/or change of occupancy provisions for existing structures. It sets specific standards and requirements an existing building must comply with, and what minimum upgrades need to be addressed depending on the proposed scope of work in the existing structure. We would recommend including Appendices A and B. We have the International Plumbing Code. And again, although the municipalities in Illinois are required to adopt the most current edition of the State of Illinois Plumbing Code, we would recommend adopting this code as well, though they may overlap, the strictest requirements always would take precedence. The International Property Maintenance Code. This code governs the maintenance of existing structures and vacant property. It is based upon principles intended to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. The International Performance Code. This code is supplemental to the code group and allows the code official to consider alternative means and methods to achieve the requirements of the code. The code group in general is considered to be a prescriptive method, whereas the International Performance Code is performance-based and allows consideration and approval of alternative means and methods to achieve the prescriptive requirements. In conjunction with this 2009 code group, staff has pretty much completed a full revision to the City of Wood Dale Local Building Code Amendments, which is this code that I held up earlier. Included in the local building code are revisions and deletions to and from the International Code Group that tailors the code to better fit the needs of Wood Dale. These code revisions and deletions have been determined after review of the code group by city staff and staff from the Wood Dale Fire Protection District. Some of these items have been part of the Wood Dale Building Code Amendments for years, and some will be new with this addition of the code. A more in-depth and detailed description of the revisions and deletions will be included with the report and recommendation for the adoption of the local code amendments, which I anticipate bringing forward probably the last committee meeting in February. I have spoken with the city attorney, though, and he felt that it's proper to adopt the 2009 code group first, and then we can subsequently adopt our building code amendments that contain any revisions or deletions to that code. So again, it's staff recommendation to adopt 2009 International Code Council Group, and the appendices as herein described as the City of Wood Dale Building Code.
So, John, the $50,000 question is, what's our legal obligation to adopt that portion of the code that speaks about the fire sprinkler systems?
We are able to revise and delete pretty much any sections of the international code if we want to. We do have that right.
So, the question is going to be to those of us on this side of the dais, what's our moral obligation to allow that to remain in the code or selectively pick it out? So, with that, it would be my recommendation to approve these, the International Building Code and all of its subcategory codes as per staff's recommendation. And that is a motion. Is there a second? I'll call a question. Second. All right. Alderman Shaki.
The sprinkler code you're talking about, wouldn't that, it would be grandfathered in that houses built before the date we decide would not have to have it, right?
Correct, yes. The International Residential Code, the sprinkler requirement is only for new houses, new structures. And in fact, it even has an exemption in there where if you were going to remodel and put an addition or alter an existing house, you would not have to put the sprinkler system in.
And the International Fire Code says without unnecessarily increasing construction costs. How do they manage that and put sprinklers in?
Well, the International Fire Code really does not go into detail for the residential sprinkler systems. The residential code, which is this book, is kind of a standalone code, because the code looks at one- and two-family dwellings as sort of totally separate entities from multifamily, commercial, and industrial.
So, that multifamily apartments, tall five-story buildings, would not need the water?
No, they would be required to be sprinkled, but that would be governed by the other codes that are contained in the code group. As I said, the residential code is just one of these eight or 10 different codes that comprise the code group when all assembled. So, the residential code is a standalone code that governs one- and two-family dwellings. That's what requires the sprinklers in the one- and two-family dwellings. And there's a section in here, you know, as far as some of the plumbing requirements that give you some reference, how to design the system, what it has to comply to.
And may I, one more question?
Yes.
On the bottom of the page, International Performance Code, this wording is kind of confusing. The code group in general is considered to be the prescriptive method, whereas the IPC is performance-based and allows consideration and approval of alternative means to achieve the prescriptive. What are they saying?
Well, it's prescriptive, it's almost sort of like following a recipe. Prescriptive, you have a recipe, it tells you you have to use a cup of flour, and some of this and some of that, whereas the performance says, well, you're going to try and make this cake, but you don't necessarily need to use a cup of flour. You could use a half a cup of flour and a half a cup of cornstarch, as long as you end up with the same result. So, it allows us to use some different materials and products out there. What they're looking at is achieving the ultimate goal.
And your department would make that determination?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Alderman Coles had his hand up next.
I got one question, John. On the sprinkler systems for the private houses, $4,000 isn't very much for safety. You hear of these houses that burned down, and the fire department didn't get there in time, and the house is completely gone because they couldn't find no fire hydrants or anything. So, it'd be advisable for somebody to put them in the new houses because of just their own safety. I know if I was building a house and I had an extra few bucks, I would put it in, I would put a sprinkler system in for my own safety. Because if you've got water coming down, you're going to put out, you're going to put out some of the fuel. And what kills you in the houses now is all the plastic. The plastic is what kills most of the people, because the plastic turns out gas. If you ever seen these firemen go into these houses that they have for prevention, and they want plastic, they come down to the auto shops and get all the old plastic that they got around, so they can burn it, just to get the guys to get the taste of the plastic, the smell of the plastic. So, it's advisable that we keep that in there. I'm a strong believer, we should.
Exactly. And that's what they found on these fire tests. As I say, they did one in the 70s. Average time for people to get out was 17 minutes. Now, with today's building materials, that's down to a little over three minutes. And that's because of all the plastics and the man-made materials that they're using, not only in furnishings, but just in the general construction itself. And I should note that one of the surveys, or one of the articles that I read from NFPA, when they've surveyed cities who've required the fire sprinklers in single-family residences, there have been no fire deaths in single-family residents where they're sprinkled. And I was talking with Alderman Caddella earlier. Just so we're aware, I mean, the fire sprinklers in the single-family homes, I mean, it's here to stay. And just for your own information, in the metropolitan area, there are 67 communities that have already adopted fire sprinkler ordinances. Just some of the closer ones, Rolling Meadows, Hoffman Estates, Streamwood, Villa Park, Roselle, Glen Ellen, Clarton Hills, Lincolnwood, Oakbrook Terrace, Mount Prospect. So, a lot of the surrounding communities already have this in place.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. Couple of things that, just for first clarification, when are you looking for approval on whether to have the two-year grandfathered on the sprinklers or to have immediately that enforced? Are you looking for that tonight?
Well, I think what we would like is some direction. I, you know, again, it's no secret that the building trades and the housing in general is in some pretty, they're having some pretty severe problems these days. And we, I think Wood Dale's been fortunate, we've had some quality builders in town. But if you sit back and look at it, and kind of look at it from a builder's perspective, in the last year, we've had to adopt the 2009 International Energy Code that was mandated by the State of Illinois, as you recall. We adopted that about a year ago. So, now the builders have got to comply to that energy code, which adds several thousand dollars onto the cost of a house. We also have the brick ordinance that was passed last year. That adds quite a bit of money onto the cost of a house. So, now we're going to be adopting this code, and if we include the sprinkler clause in there, which I feel that we should, now we're talking about adding another four, five, six, maybe $7,000 onto the cost of a house.
Well, I would say that I do agree that we should enforce it as soon as possible. So, I was thinking, you know, if someone already has a permit, then I don't think we should be calling them back in to say, add it on. But anything that doesn't already have a permit, we need to start doing it right away. It sounds very important to have it enforced right away.
Yeah, I think I'm going to agree with you there. Alderman Wesley, you were next.
I have, and we talked several times about this. So, you're trying to tell me what your course that you took, that they do not have to have another separate line brought in from the street to the house? They could tie into the existing water source.
Correct. When they do the calculations for residential sprinkler system, they only calc the water flow with two heads.
So, if you have a three-story, let's make, so if you have a three-story building going out, like a couple of houses in my ward that it looks like a three-flat apartment building, and they got three floors, you're going to tell me that they're only going to sprinkler two of those floors?
No. No. The full residence would have to be sprinkled. But as you remember with your fire background, when a sprinkler contractor is designing a system, they designed the water supply for a certain determined amount of heads going off at the same time. That water supply has to be able to supply that many heads. As you know, again, not like the movies, if one sprinkler head goes off, the whole system does not go off. Sprinkler heads have to be activated
By the heat.
One by one by one by the heat. So, when they do the flow calcs for a residential system, they assume they have to service two heads going off at one time. So, most homes today, most new homes, you know, again, it's been a while since a one-inch water service is adequate to serve a newer home these days. So, most people are putting in inch-and-a-half water services. An inch-and-a-half water service is more than adequate to supply the domestic needs plus a residential sprinkler system. You are able to use plastic pipe, which keeps the cost down. And, you know, they have recessed heads that you can
Right.
hide in the wall, which will sort of hopefully prevent the frisbee that gets thrown around or something from knocking a head off.
Okay. I'll tell you one thing, I really support this one. Being a first for so many years, it should have been a long time coming. My only concern when we addressed this before is that I was under the impression they would have to provide a separate water line source for it, and we didn't have those answers at that time. But now that John attended that class, I have no hesitation passing this as is written tonight, providing that I agree with her, if the permits are issued for these houses ready, no. But any new permit starting affecting when we pass this, it's got to be sprinkler. So, I am in favor of passing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lewitin was next.
Just the clarification of a word you used, perspective. My understanding of the word perspective is the opposite of retroactive. It's from this point forward, as opposed to applying to things that are in existence already. So, when you say this is perspective, if that's the definition of the word, it's clear that you're only talking about things that are going to happen going forwards. Is that correct?
Correct. And it's been the usual and customary procedure in our department. If somebody has already applied for a permit, and that's in the works, and there's new legislation passed or new code passed, that particular permit would still be grandfathered, would not have to comply to it.
Because you don't go retroactive, you go prospective.
Correct.
And he got in there before that door was closed to do it the other way.
Correct.
The other thing I would like to ask your opinion, do you think this would be an appropriate time to repeal the brick ordinance?
Actually, I think that should be discussed at a future, on a future agenda, but it's not on tonight's agenda. But in conjunction with this, it's certainly, it's certainly something to consider, and I will entertain the discussion for it at a future meeting. Future meetings.
You're going to put it in future items to discuss?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, with that having been said, I withdraw the question at this time, but ask you to be prepared to answer it when Alderman Caddella asks it the next time.
All right, fair enough.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Lewitin. I know we have some more questions down there. Technical question, John, will backflow preventers be mandatory part of this system so we don't get stagnant water back flowing into the potable system?
Yes.
Okay. And that'll be, okay, so would that be just one backflow in the house to keep the house water for mixing, or will there be a second one, like on the outside of the house, to keep the private property's water from backing into the public system?
No.
To what level of safety is necessary?
The backflow preventer would be located in the house after the meter, because you would have, you have your water service come in, you have your water meter, and then on the house side of the water meter, you would then have your takeoff for the sprinkler system, and that's where you'd have to have the backflow preventer on the sprinkler system.
All right, thank you. Alderman Shaki was next.
You know, I agree, we need this, but the only question I have is, what if somebody doesn't pay their water bill? We can't turn that water off anymore, because we'd be liable if something happened to that house, and it had a sprinkler system which we stopped the water. Is there an answer for that? That's the only question I have.
Well, I thought about that earlier, but if you don't pay your gas bill, and your gas gets turned off, and your house is not heated, and all the pipes freeze, and then when they defrost, they burst and ruin your house, you can't go back and sue NICOR because your gas was turned off.
I'd like to see us clear that through the municipal lawyer, just to make sure. That's the only question I have about it. Thank you.
Mr. Stephan actually appears to have something to input or to respond. John, give him the microphone.
What some communities are doing right now is they'll put two B-boxes right out on the street, different color caps perhaps, but that way you can isolate, one line goes directly in for the house service, the other one goes in for this fire suppression system, keeping it separate. That way, you can keep the fire suppression system live, you don't have to shut that off, and then you can keep the other one. You can take one and shut it off and keep the other one live. But you do that right outside the house, is what some communities are doing to address that exact question.
That would essentially double the city's cost that they have to charge the contractor, because it's another B-box, another line to the property. So, the cost goes up somewhat.
They, you know, they do it right outside the house, still one meter, you know. They don't really charge them for the fire, for, you know, flows. But, you know, they just have one meter again strictly for the drinkable water, potable water. The other one is a line that comes off right before the valve, and that way they can isolate either one.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Coles was next.
John, do you know what, how much pressure you got in the, water pressure in the lines right now? Do you know approximately, somebody could tell me?
I don't. Perhaps John Kramer might know that. Perhaps John Kramer might know that.
Kind of depends on the area of town, but I'll say between 60 and 70.
I was just gonna say about that. All right, okay. Maybe somebody didn't know, but that's how much pressure there is.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. And then regarding the items that you feel should have a permit, but they're not outlined in the revised code, can you read off the items that we would be demanding a permit on, but they're not in the code?
Oh, you know, I didn't actually bring the International Building Code upstairs. I can do that. But as I recall, some of the things that the International Building Code book exempted from permits were sheds, decks, fences, those types of things.
Okay, and yeah, I would agree those are items that-
I can get that information to you as well. But it's, yeah, there were, most of the items, it's like, well, wait a minute, of course you need to get a permit for that.
Yeah, okay.
And again, they try, this code is used internationally, so that's why they allow you the, you know, to be able to kind of tweak it for your own area.
Okay, thank you.
So there was a motion to approve the, the adoption of these codes. There was a second. I would like to amend my motion and say that upon approval at council level, we began implementing the sprinkler portion of this, of this code. So if the secondor agrees, that's what I would, so basically immediately, rather than waiting six or 12 months. So does the secondor agree? Alderman Wes, I thought it was Alderman Wesley. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Alderman Shaki? Okay. All right. Call and roll, please.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley? Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
That passes. Alderman Wesley.
I have a question to ask the city manager. The engineer that's here tonight, Elstefan, we're paying him an hourly rate.
Under the current contract proposal that was submitted a couple of months ago, I believe there's a flat rate for the services of Baxter and Woodman, yeah?
Are we paying for the hourly rate of being here at these meetings?
I would assume so.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, I don't know if it's proper that I could make a motion to recess building and zoning and go to Elstefan under public works.
He's under CIP, though. He's on finance and everything.
More than under those, since they're paying an hourly rate.
I have no objection, but for clarification, is, is that, is that accurate? I thought, I was under the impression that it's a flat rate to be here, not hourly. Is there, is there a financial benefit to the city of Wooddale by recessing this meeting?
He's gonna be here for a whole meeting anyways.
It's flat, doesn't that mean he's been holding?
Yeah, it is currently, it's not a flat rate right now. However, we have the CIP discussion under Finance Committee that he would be involved in, and also the Public Works Committee. So I would assume that those are gonna be lengthy conversations, and the rest of PZB, I don't know how lengthy it would be, but we'll probably be here, it'll be a long night anyway, so, but it is an hourly rate, yes.
But my point is, we spent, we started 40 minutes ago, and so, you're the chairman.
I have no strong objection to it. Mr. Mayor?
Actually, I have a question on a different subject, if you want to hold. I had a question about your last motion, I was just thinking about it. The motion, as I understood it, was that the sprinkler section of the code goes into effect immediately. Wouldn't the entire code become a matter of law on signing and passage? And everything, everything in the code goes into effect?
So we, we adopt everything when it's, after, upon final approval at council level.
But the motion, as I understood, the way you phrased it, was that the sprinkler section would go into effect immediately on passage?
No, I said immediately upon council approval.
Right. Wouldn't the entire code go into effect on council approval?
It would, unless we specified otherwise, that we would take one section of it out and, and postpone that.
That's why I was questioning why you were specifying one section would go into effect immediately.
Well, the whole, the whole thing would, but the discussion that that one section could have been, could have been delayed.
That section would go into effect immediately.
As would the rest.
Right.
That was implied.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Because the motion says that section of the code goes into effect immediately.
You're aggravating Alderman Wesley here, because we're using Elstefan's timing.
I agree.
So is there, is there any reason not to switch to Finance Committee at this point? I have no objection as the chairman. I know, there's only three items. If we don't talk so much, we can get through them fast, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. But can we make it a practice if we have people here that
We're paying.
that we're paying, that we change things around here? I don't know if his policy about how these meetings are set up, but do we make that? We normally do. But he's here for finance and public works. He's gonna be here all night anyways. Alderman Wesley, last time he was here for the whole meeting.
All right. We're gonna stay with this meeting. Next item, report and recommendation, revisions to temporary sign permit restrictions. John, 32nd recap.
Okay.
Starting now.
In November, we brought forward a suggestion for the council to reconsider fees and the time limit imposed in the sign ordinance for temporary signs, which you agreed for the holiday season of 2010 to do. We're coming back again. Review of the sign ordinance adopted in 2006 addresses two types of temporary signage. One is a sandwich board style of sign, which is exempt from requiring a permit. And these signs are fairly common in pedestrian-friendly environments, and are typically placed on the sidewalk in front of an establishment, but they're also allowed to be placed near the front property line of a property that a business occupies. They have size restrictions, and this sign is only allowed to be placed outside during normal business hours, has to be carried in and out every day. The benefit of this type of sign is that no permit's required, and there's no time limit imposed for its use. The other kind of temporary sign that we have is not exempt and requires a permit, and these temporary signs are allowed to be up to 16 square feet, include several types of signage, does not have to be taken up and down every day, a $25 fee is required, 15-day time limit is imposed for the display of the sign, and $100 penalty fee is imposed if the city staff has to remove the sign. These types of signs are allowed three times a year, maximum of 15 days, per total of 45 days per calendar year. Staff's bringing forward two alternatives for your consideration, in an attempt to try and help our local businesses as much as we can. Even though this might be kind of a minimal contribution, I think it's important that the business community know that we support them, and we'll do whatever we can to try and help them be successful. So the first of these considerations would be to continue to require the permits be issued per the current procedures, maybe lower the fee to $15 from 25, and that would cover staff time for plan review and processing, allow temporary signs to be displayed three times a year, 15 days each, and allow a separate 61-day display from November 1st to December 31st. This will allow the city to continue to exercise control over temporary signs, but will increase the time of display for the businesses to 106 days, up from the 45, and allow businesses a little greater flexibility when they use the other three 15-day periods. The second would be to initiate a procedure where, when a business comes in annually to renew their business license, they can indicate whether they want to secure an annual permit to allow temporary signage. Annual fee would have to be determined, but that would be in addition to the business license fee. If the applicant chooses this option, they pay the fee upfront. Business owner would still be required to apply for a permit each time they desired a temporary sign, so that we could verify size and location, and the allowable time periods for temporary signs would be the same as alternative number one.
Seems to me that if a business is gonna want to put up a sign, they may not think about it, or realize or know it at the time of pulling the, the business license. So I think option one allows the most flexibility. Option two doesn't necessarily implicitly state or imply that you're not going to be able to get a sign permit for a temporary sign after you've applied for your business license anyway.
Well, that would be, yeah, that, I mean, that section would be addressed in the business license application.
Right. But, but you're, I mean, you're allowing them an opportunity to do it there, but if they say no at that point, and then realize three months later, I want it, they're gonna come back for it anyway. So it seems option one is the most flexible and the easiest to track, in my opinion. So that would be my recommendation. If anybody has any opinions or thoughts on the matter?
I'll make the motion to approve option number one.
Second.
Mayor?
I just have a question. Lately, we see a lot of signage like Food for Less, where there's advertising signage inside a building. Is that totally exempt from our code, I presume?
Yeah, interior window signs are exempt.
It's not even a window sign, it's advertising within a commercial building for another commercial purpose.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I follow what you're-
Like at Food for Less, their Super Low Foods, there'll be an advertisement for an insurance agent.
Ah.
Is that totally exempt, or is that covered under our code?
I'll have to look into that. Off the top of my head, I would think it would be exempt, but we'll look into that.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Next item, report and recommendation, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, open call for projects. Ross Clicker, please talk about this money that may be available to us, and what it is that you're proposing we do with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, or CMAP, has secured a $4.5 million award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development over the next three years for technical assistance to communities in their long-range planning efforts. These assistance would come at no cost to the communities. After reviewing the notice of this program and the types of projects that would be eligible for assistance, and comparing this with the long-range planning needs for Wooddale, staff would recommend that we request assistance from CMAP in preparing an update to our comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan serves as a guide for future land use and redevelopment activity. In this respect, it is extremely important that this plan be updated on a regular basis to not only assist staff in seeking out the appropriate development and redevelopment opportunities for the city, but also as a tool for developers, so that they have an understanding about what the community desires and expects in their development proposals. Our current plan, overall comprehensive plan, was completed in 1997, and a supplement was completed in 2003 that suggested development patterns based upon the development and implementation of the rerouting of Irving Park Road through alternative, what was known as Alternative 2A. Additionally, the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway was not addressed in either of these plans. Since that date, Alternative 2A has been removed from consideration, and the configuration of the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway has been brought into clearer focus with the Federal Highway Administration Tier 1 approval of the road design referred to as Alternative 203D. With these changes and their potential impact upon development and redevelopment opportunities within the city, it is believed that the comprehensive plan and its supplement do not adequately address long-range plans and aspirations for the city of Wooddale, and we would recommend that it is time to update our entire comprehensive plan.
Okay, a couple of questions. First of all, with regards to the comp plan, there's another, I mean, there are parts of it, not just what you talked about, I think that are inappropriate. One that comes to mind, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the vacant land on Wooddale Road south of, yeah, south of Elizabeth, that's unincorporated right now? I think that the comprehensive plan calls for multifamily in there?
Medium density.
Okay, medium density. So I think that there are places like that, that it may be inappropriate. Question, though, with regards to particularly the area, I know the 2A is, is no longer there, but there still is another option on the table, at least until after this, this spring, and, and our final decision after the, after the public's vote. If we secure the money now, is there any obligation to, to spend it in a certain period of time? Or would we be able to wait until we know what's going on with that underpass to get this comp plan as accurate as, as possible, without designing around yet another question?
The, the deadline for application for requests for assistance is January 28th. At that point, if our project is chosen, then we begin discussing with CMAP timing and aspects of that. At that time, I will bring up the aspect of the milk jug handle and the ramifications of that towards the potential development, and see if we can either work around it or hold off until the decision is made regarding that.
But in all honesty, we're talking less than three months from the time you submit the application, to the time we should be having final discussions on that matter.
Shouldn't impact.
So should be no conflict. Okay, Alderman Winger?
I'm looking at the projects that are eligible program types, and just given all of the flooding and water issues we have in Wooddale, that I do see that, and in that section, the fourth bullet, it does talk about the inclusion of planning for stormwater management in areas that experience flooding. That I believe we could use something like that, and it would be maybe even more of a value to the community. And even with the swales, and how the infallible swales, and just looking at how to redesign in these areas that we do spend significant dollars on when issues come up, it would be nice to have a proactive approach and really look at these areas and have it funded by an outside source. So I, I would almost lean on exploring that before the overall comprehensive plan of purely updating. Thank you.
That, that's a good point, and just to, to that point, I also wanted to ask the question, is it appropriate to submit multiple applications? Because we'll see tonight, when we get to CIP, we do have unfunded projects that may very well qualify for, for that line item. So do you know if we can submit multiple?
Again, I believe we could. I, looking at bullet point number four, I, I didn't honestly put it in for at this point, because it does indicate that it's for protecting future housing supply, and I don't really see that we'll have a lot of future housing supply in the, in the affected areas. However, we can, I can definitely draft up a second application if the council would direct me to do so.
I, I would think it's critical for you to investigate that further, yeah. Alderman Winger, follow up?
Yeah, just a follow-up. I don't read it that way, Russ. And, and maybe it's just the way that we're, I'm interpreting it, but I look at it like a sub, each of those are subcategories within the bullet.
Okay.
Like experiencing flooding, or projecting future housing supply, or studying local parking policies, et cetera.
I will, I could definitely, again, if the council desires, I will check with CMAP, if they allow two applications, I will definitely draft the second for the stormwater aspect.
And if they don't allow two?
Alderman Police?
Actually, I had that same bullet point right here in CIP tonight. We're gonna talk about macro study for stormwater. I think it's about 350,000. I'd like to lean that way also.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I kind of agree with that, is, it doesn't say in here that you can't submit for them all. So why did we not submit for them all? Why did you not list everything? It doesn't say that you only could submit for one in here.
Correct.
At all. So why would we not go for the whole gusto like we go for grant money anytime else? Why would we not fill that vacation out for all of them?
Again, my interpretation of it at the time, when I'm reading through it, is that this was for protecting future housing supply with the stormwater aspects. Again, I didn't, I will, I will clarify that with CMAP. If we can add a second application or add that to that, I definitely will.
Because it doesn't say, it doesn't say in here, and I read this a couple of times, it doesn't say you only could apply for one, doesn't say you only apply for two. You could apply, far I'm concerned with this, you could apply for the whole entire sheet here. And they're gonna pick on which way you're gonna be able to get the money for it. So why, when we go for grant regardless, if it doesn't say you only could apply for one, and you get something like this, I would think that my staff will apply for everything on this whole entire list, and let them decide what they're gonna give us. If they only give us for flooding, well, fine, then we'll take the money from there. But if you're delaying it, you got till January 28th. When did this come out?
It came out, I wrote the memo the day after I got it, so December 27th.
So they didn't submit this out, put it out until the 27th, this company, or whoever this is?
The Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, that is when I became aware of the application program.
Okay, but I, I say you go for everything.
Alderman Shaki?
As a matter of fact, on the request, number three- As a matter of fact, on the request, number three, it, the second sentence is you may submit more than one idea.
Perfect.
So that answers the question before all.
Well, I think, it sounds like staff has direction. Not, so not only this, but anything else you can think of. So, all right, anything else? Do you need a motion from us, or do you have direction?
I have direction.
Okay.
Follow.
Okay. I think that closes out that item. Next is report and recommendation, request for variation, T-Mobile telecommunications facility at 444 West Potter. And who's going to take this? Ross?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, please, a quick recap of where we were last time, and then what new information we have, and we'll take it from there.
Okay. The petitioner is T-Mobile. I've requested a special use, I'm sorry, variations for, to allow for the construction for a telecommunications facility and antenna tower at the existing city water storage facility located at 444 West Potter. This requires a variation because of the height of the antenna tower will be 150 feet. It exceeds the maximum permitted height, and the tower will have setbacks from the side and rear property lines which are less than the antenna height as required by code. Where we were with the discussion last time was it was the draft lease agreement, land lease agreement that was submitted by the city attorney had blanks in it, and the, and my interpretation or understanding was that the council was uncomfortable with that, not knowing where the baseline where the city attorney was beginning with. So the land lease agreement before you tonight has those blanks filled in, and some of the issues and concern, or the, and the issues and concerns raised by the council at the last committee meeting addressed in this draft land lease agreement. Also, the exhibits from the petitioner have been clarified to, to address the issues regarding the potential concern of land lease areas being inside T-Mobile's fence. The fence has been, been adjusted, and, and the exhibits clarified to indicate that any future ground lease areas would be outside of T-Mobile's area and would require a separate lease from the city of Wooddale.
So basically, it comes down to a vote? Do we want the antenna and the money that comes along with it, or don't we? Alderman Coles?
I know this is going back. Is this the same outfit that wanted to put it in a, in a sewer plant in, in a golf course?
Yes, sir.
Same one?
Yes.
They changed their mind, wherever it is? Because I was gone for six months, and I, I thought that, that's where they wanted to put it.
That was one of their original proposals at that time. They evaluated their needs and, and coverage demands, and felt that this location fills that gap in their coverage area.
All right, okay, all right. I thought that's, that's what it was.
Alderman Police?
Ross, last time, when we were looking at this, it showed the one pad, and then there was like possible two or three other pads inside. Is that still going on?
Yes, sir. You'll notice on the site plan sheet L1, you'll notice the T-Mobile area, which is shown by a fence and landscaping. There are three dash boxes outside of that which says city land rights area for future carriers, general land area to be determined by city and T-Mobile. Again, just for the, the T-Mobile aspect, just for the locations for conflict with cables and that.
But that's the city's decision if they want to put up another one. It's not like, the way I understood it before, they had the right to put up another one right next to the one they had.
That's, we clarified that with this, with this exhibit. T-Mobile has the rights for the tower. That's their tower, their, their dime on constructing it. They have the rights to allow anyone they want on that tower. However, the ground where the equipment goes is subject to a separate lease from the city of Wooddale for those carriers.
Alderman Shawkey?
I don't want to play devil's advocate tonight, but is there anything in the contract? What if that tower fell? What if there was a little mini tornado or whatever and hit our tank and damaged it, or something else? Is there anything in there that would cover that in the contract?
There are insurance requirements in here. There are, paragraph 10, thank you, I was looking for it. There are requirements regarding, for insurance requirements, there are requirements about indemnification. I believe that we are covered with it. Our city attorney has been looking at those aspects.
I may, the other part of the question is, I had asked last time if it would be more appropriate, even though it's not in Wooddale, to put that tower over on Mill Road where there is a present tower?
I had a discussion with Mr. Nyman, who is, who is present here, and he could address this in more detail if you'd like, but basically that is an existing tower that is about 80, 80 to 90 feet tall, and it already has two carriers on it. That would mean if T-Mobile were to go on that tower, it would most likely be lower, so they, their antenna would probably be in the height of about 60 feet. They would not get the coverage range off of that. They would also be covering a lot of Forest Preserve District that they're not interested in covering. This is the ultimate optimum location for covering the maximum user area.
I wasn't thinking about adding to that antenna now. I was thinking about them putting the new antenna next to the one that's there on Mill Road.
That would be outside of our jurisdiction, that would be, I...
I know, but I was just wondering from the company's viewpoint.
Again, I believe Mr. Nyman could address this in more detail, but their coverage area that they're looking to acquire is more the residential areas of Wooddale, and the circumference of what they're trying to cover would be addressed better by the location now than over in the Forest Reserve.
That's what I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Alderman Winger is next.
I'm having a hard time with this. We're adding to an area that is already almost borderline blight, that we try and make improvements there. We have a wood chip pile, we have water towers, we have just a lot, a lot of power lines. And now we're going to put antennas? You've got to be kidding me. This is...